Weren't you supposed to be?
No.
Just a budget transfer or something.
Is that first choice?
Uh huh.
Where's the land?
That's right.
Yeah.
But safe, like relieved to have that, like reliable option.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. He's very happy. Oh, great. Oh, dear.
Is that what did you say?
The student. Oh, yes, because she's technically there. Yep. Okay, let me see those things.
We're going with Mary's prediction.
I moved.
Yeah, I know you did.
I did, I was like, this is.
I didn't bother to call you because I figured at the end you usually do.
Yeah. If I'm closer, if we make the shuffle out together, we'll just start hopping and zip over to the garage.
Yes. Woman, you go. Remember? When we were gonna wait for you at the end, we thought we would lead up. And when we went outside, you were all the way.
With your.
With my. With my necklace. Yep.
She's just shorted us. Do you know why? Do you know why? Because I realized that it was timely enough that I could make this sense.
No.
So I was like. And I did.
There she is, way over there. And then we played, and the car was gone for a while.
Okay. All right, woman on a mission. A mom on a mission. Listen, keep doing stuff along the way. You should. Okay. Sometimes I hope to get a little work on the feet or something. I have to pay attention to them. Tomorrow, late tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow. She is. And so did you really amass an early action? Yes, yes, I should. Looking out to the. She's like, I'm. I think I'm gonna wait to check it with my friend.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, hey. She is so sweet. What's that? One mic, yeah. We pulled it down here because I think. Oh, for real? Oh, so you're taking the mic.
Mr. Mayor, we're good to go when you are.
Good evening and welcome to December 11th, 2024 School Committee Regular Meeting at 6:30 in the reception room, Merrimack Street, Lowell, Mass. Please stand, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mia Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Seven present.
Also joined by Servica this evening. Good to see you. We went to the minutes, 3.1. Approval of the minutes, the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of November 20th, 2024. The motion to approve by Mr. Lay, second by Mr. Bahu. All the favors, roll call? I don't know. Okay, nope. All the favors say aye, opposed motion passes. For permission to enter. 4.1, December 11th, 2024. The motion to approve the permission to enter by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Honesty. Just a couple of questions, I guess. I noticed there was over $3 million in facilities work being done funded by the IVAQ grant, which I wanted to just put a shout out how excited I am to see that happening. And I wanted to ask, how are we making decisions about what facilities are being addressed with this grant? I noticed some of them are not our older schools.
Right. I'll offer to any of the cabinet members who wish to speak about that. But as my understanding, we're working with Paul St. Seer, the Commissioner of Public Works. And so from my knowledge of it, different schools have different systems. Many schools either don't have a chiller or are not eligible to have a chiller replacement. They may be due for other work in lieu of a chiller. This just happens to be one among many, many projects. And yes, we're very grateful to have support from the city in receiving that IBAC grant.
Okay. And then one other thing I just want to comment on. We've got over $500,000 in costs for transportation for our unhoused students. And I think that's probably the highest. I don't know for sure, but it seems like we're getting more and more students in this category. And I know we have a responsibility to provide transportation. It's just a lot of money in transportation that could be going to services for those students, which I imagine are facing a lot of other conditions as well. But I do, I wanted to, I motion to approve it and I'm accepting that approval. I don't know if you have any comments, Mr. Skinner.
One feature I think is probably worth reminding the committee that in the past, when we've received new students into the district, you know, in the middle of the school year, there's no additional funding that comes with them. With the migrant students who we've received in Lowell and for the expenses that we go through on their behalf, we are given a stipend of $104 per day per student, which is the equivalent of about $18,000 per year, which is right about the per student cost. So it's an unusual and a welcome situation that we're actually being funded by the state for each of those students.
So I didn't realize they were migrant students. I thought they were homeless students. Or is that the same?
I'm referring to students at the Inn and Conference Center.
Okay.
There are homeless students as well. I don't want to misspeak. I know that Ms. Phillips is more expert than I on the actual precise terms to use in each situation. Migrant students are by definition are homeless. We also have a considerable, about 15% of our population are homeless in addition. So we have both categories and they overlap.
Great, thank you.
A motion.
I just have one more question. Addition to that is, how do you provide, like, out-of-district transport in addition to homeless? Like, what's the differentiation?
So there are two reasons for out-of-district transport. One is if we place a child in a placement, in a special ed placement out of district, then we also have to incur the cost of transporting them. For homeless students, including migrant students who are housed in Lowell, yes?
So homeless and migrants aren't the same class of people?
They're not. So migrant students are homeless because they've just arrived. There are homeless students, there are families in Lowell who are unhoused, who are not migrant families. So it's a broader category.
So how do we differentiate through this? Like, who's migrant and who's homeless?
In terms of transportation, there's little difference. We're obligated for a homeless child to offer the family to, that the child would remain in the school that they were in before they came to Lowell. And so if a child was, for example, a migrant student, oftentimes they were in school in Bedford or they could have been in school in Walthem before they were placed in Lowell. When they're then placed in Lowell, we're obligated to offer them to transport to the community that they went to school in before. We're trying to convince them to go to school in Lowell oftentimes, but they're entitled to keep their child in the school they were in before. In those cases, we bear 50% of the cost and the other community takes the other 50%.
For those students who have, like, resided in Lowell, essentially, right?
Who are residing in Lowell now, yes.
Okay.
All set? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I have one question.
Sure, Spock, go ahead.
Of the $104 that we're getting reimbursed for the migrants, is there any additional money for the homeless, I'm sorry, for the transportation? Because ultimately, you know, a migrant could be Methuen high and choose to come to Lowell. Is there any other reimbursement other than having Methuen pick up half the cost?
No.
There is none. Okay, thank you.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six shades, one answer.
Five, our memorials. We have two this evening. 5.1, Maureen A. Souza, Front Office Secretary at the Robertson Middle School. And 5.2, Thomas J. Canty, husband of James Mosher Canty and father of Brendan Canty, English teacher at the Ballot Community Partnership School. Mayors and peace, thank you. Six, we have two motions this evening. 6.1 by Mr. Rossi. Request a superintendent to report on the bus dismissal procedure for each middle school students throughout the district. Are they escorted to the bus by staff? How is each middle school bus dismissal procedure at each school the same or different? Is there a second to this? Ms. Dougherty, Ms. Doherty?
Yes. So what I'm understanding from parents is that there is a lot of misconduct in that period of time in different schools, at different situations. And I think if we had a universal dismissal for bus policy, it would be very helpful.
Thank you.
All the favors say aye, opposed motion passes. 6.2 by Mr. Rossi. Request a superintendent to report on two-way communication at the middle school level when it comes to a student being disciplined at the school. How is the parent notified, phone call, email, talking points? Second by Mr. Lay, Ms. Doherty.
Same. It seems to be differentiated and not so much in terms of English-speaking parents, but of parents who do not speak the same language and whether or not whatever has happened is communicated, whether it's email or talking points or whichever mode of transport, whichever mode of communication. So I just want to make sure that there is a universal policy for discipline as there is for bus dismissal. Thank you.
All the favors say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 7 Subcommittee, the approval of the minutes of a policy and government subcommittee meeting on November 26th, 2024. Chairwoman Dougherty?
Thank you. So the policy subcommittee did meet on Tuesday, November 26th, at 6:30. Present were myself and Ms. Doherty. From the school department, we had Ms. Phillips, the Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, and Alicia Mallon, who's our field representative from the Mass Association of School Committees. The discussion that night was about a bunch of the policies related to GA, Personnel Policy Goals, GBA, Equal Employment Opportunity, GBAA, which is harassment policy. So in your packet, you have the different policies we looked at with the recommendations from MASC. We pretty much took those recommendations wholeheartedly. There are a couple of areas that we felt we should have some discussion with the committee and that happens later on in this meeting, which is in that big packet you got. This is the first reading of these policies. So when we get to that portion, I think they've been flagged for us and we could talk to them at that point. So at this point, I would just put this in as a report of progress. Oh, and also to tell everybody, we have scheduled our next meeting for the new year, which is going to be January 8th. So we are diligently trying to meet every month and get through this 900-plus-page document that hasn't been updated in some cases since the 70s, if you can believe it. And I do appreciate your taking the time to allow us to make the next steps in the process, which is to bring it before the full committee. Thank you.
The motion to accept the report, a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Bahu. All the favors say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 8, reports to the superintendent. 8.1, Strategic Planning Steering Committee update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. You have in your packet, it's, we don't think of this day-to-day all the time, that we're in a strategic planning year. So we're in the final year of a five-year strategic plan. And as we go through this year, we're working on developing a new strategic plan. We have partners that are helping us with that, a group called Attuned. The process involves such things as performance data analysis, instructional quality review, and so on. And the process is pretty comprehensive and broken into various phases. So rather than wait till the very end of the year to tell you everything we've done, we have produced this update for you about those phases and how far we have progressed to date. Happy to take any questions.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. And just one quick question, then a couple of things that jumped out at me. First of all, I think it's excellent that you're providing it in this executive summary format that we can quickly digest what are the key points we need to know. My quick question is, what is this costing us? Because I remember when we did the five-year in the previous administration, you know, we put in a chunk of money. And I'm just wondering if anybody knows what this, the support you're getting from this group? Just curious what the costs are.
Can I make two comments, please? Because I want, if you're giving us compliments, I want to acknowledge the work is largely the responsibility of Ms. Crocker. And she leads our work and she guides us. We all at the cabinet participate on the steering committee, but Ms. Crocker's more involved on a weekly basis with the provider. The answer to your question about the cost, believe it or not, is no cost. So you're dealing with a very fiscally responsive cabinet. I'm really serious about that. We've worked with a group before. The group is called Attuned. And very often, Attuned, we know, finds grant funding from sources such as the Bar Foundation, which tend to be favorable towards cities like Lowell. And so when we sought partners in the work, we had various bidders from $150,000 to $300,000. It would have cost the same, that's what it costs for Attuned. But Attuned were able to find Bar Foundation funding to cover that cost, so no cost to us.
Well, Mr. Skinner, if I was happy before, I'm really happy now. I couldn't think of a better answer than that. And I know we've worked with the Bar Foundation before, so I'm sure we've got a reputation. Couple of things that I was just really thrilled to see, you know, that we're, our staff are celebrated for their commitment to students. I know we've seen through the years that we hold on to people. We have a lot of committed staff working hard for our kids. The ELA and math proficiency rates being the highest among our district peers also means a lot to me. Lowell Public Schools outperformed all district peers in math and all but one in ELA proficiency for grades three to eight. The chronic absenteeism has dropped by 15 points since 21, 22, with LPS rates now better than the peers and within 5% of statewide rates. So these are really good points of progress. And then when we look at the gaps, and I do want to talk about that because I know as we go forward, this is where we'll be looking to get information from your administrative team about the efforts and the steps we're making to address the gaps, why disparities in academic outcomes persist, especially with, you know, diverse learners and we're looking to have enhanced resources for those learners. And we're talking about curriculum consistency and rigor, looking to do a better job with that. This one has been kind of a personal pet peeve of mine, the significant variability across schools, that we have different academic outcomes and they vary considerably across schools. And the need for more consistent equitable school climates. And you know, I've been talking about that for a while. The facilities alone tell a story about not being equitable. And issues with the facility upgrades, particularly ventilation, air conditioning. I know those are areas where we will continue to work on, but I just wanted to say, I found this report very informative and I'm even happier to know we're not paying big bucks for it.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. And I thank you again to Ms. Crocker. If I may, it's helpful and it's really gratifying that you pay attention to the details that are in there and also that you have accentuated the positive. Around schools, achievement scores and around chronic absenteeism, it's great that we're making progress and that you've acknowledged that. It is nothing to write home about. It's unfortunately, in comparison with like districts that are struggling. And we ought to be headed that pack and we ought to make, we have lot, we have much, much more progress to make. We believe we know many of the ingredients for making that progress and we're about to do it. But thank you for acknowledging the progress we've made so far.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, this was a very informative report. Thank you for all you've done. I'm curious, on the highlights, the community opportunities and belonging as well as the academic achievement compared to peer districts, are we advertising any of this? Because it's something that, you know, maybe our parents, our people that live in the city should realize that, you know, the students feel, really feel like they're belonging here, like the opportunities are here in Lowell Public Schools. And how are we reaching out to them, to inform them, to let them know that we have, you know, a great bond rating or a great rating from this academic group and effort? Is there a way that we can sort of share that information?
It's a great question, Mr. Bahu. So the information that suggests that there's a good sense of belonging in our schools, that comes from the families who are in our schools right now. So if we share that information with them, we'll be telling them what they've just told us, right? But I think what you're suggesting is that we use that good news and broadcast it. And we are working, we have a specific goal this year around marketing. We're not good at marketing. We're good at doing the work, but we don't take the time to accentuate the positive in that sense and get it out there. We are working on that. We have some initiatives already ongoing, but we have much more work to do.
Sure, between the newspapers and the blogs and the radio stations and all of the information pieces out there, I'm sure we can advertise it and begin to create that, you know, excitement about Lowell Public Schools. One other thing, I noticed the graduation rate since 2019 has declined. Is this statewide, is this a statewide issue where it's declined by such, you know, a number? It's currently at 7%? Or is it more in the inner-city school districts?
Ms. Crocker?
Thank you, Superintendent. So graduation rate post-pandemic has been an issue across the board. It's something that we've been tracking very carefully. What I want to mention is that we are not yet able to report on the graduation rates, the dropout rates for this year. We're aware of that information, but it's still embargoed. So it's something that we keep track of very closely. But we are, you know, hopeful to be able to report on, you know, reversal of that trend in the coming months.
Okay, and is this pretty equal to other peer districts of ours?
I would say that our peer districts are in a similar situation. Not every district in Massachusetts is in a similar situation. But again, amongst our peer districts that we were compared to on all of the other indicators, yes, unfortunately, you know, there was a downward trend, particularly post-pandemic.
Okay, thank you. It was a great report. I know I read it and it's very informative, so we appreciate all you do.
8.2, a response to motion by Mr. Conway on November 20th, 2024, regarding the presidential Lowell High School Mark election. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Crocker, for the report. Obviously, you're gathering information from what they're giving you. To be quite frank with you, I was very disappointed in that Mark election. I've done a number of Mark elections before and that's why I put this motion on probably four months earlier, so that it would get plenty of time. plenty of time to put together a great mock election. And to do it right, you have to bring in all the different departments. Just very briefly, what we would do is we would bring in the math departments, they would do the calculations, we would bring the history and the English. They would do the research and the writing of the different candidates. We'd have the art classes in there, and they would do the posters. And when I ever saw that they, they brought them, was it the English classes? Is that what they voted? They did the mock election in the English classes? Yeah, I don't, or was it the history classes? History, right?
English, because everybody takes English.
I thought it said history that you put this in.
It says social studies, yes.
Social studies, right. It was social studies. And you're right when you say it should be done in the English classes. Because what we did was we, we brought them all in and from each English class so that we would ensure that we would have, everyone have the opportunity to vote. In other words, there'd be no voter suppression. And what we have is, and I noticed there was approximately 1,000 students that voted, correct? And yet we have over 3,000 students plus staff. And I can, I can honestly say that when we had the mock elections, there were almost 4,000 people. I mean, it was a big to-do. Newspapers were down there. We had, we had the candidates were constantly calling to find out what kind of results. I mean, it was, it was a big thing. And the kids got involved, the staff got involved. And as I said, it wasn't done overnight. And from what I understand, this was done maybe a couple of days before this meeting. And that's not appropriate. However, I do notice that the paragraph that you have down there where you talk about the 1,049 students that participated, and you do say in there that, you know, it's the room for improvement and to going forward. You know, I think what we did here, to be quite frank with you, the reason why I put that on four months ago is because I knew this was going to be a big part in history. And for somebody that taught history and government for over 20 years, this was fertile ground for these kids to understand what it is to vote and how important it is to vote, and what they should be looking for in candidates and so forth. And as I said, to do it, to do it right, it takes, it takes work. But I'll tell you, it really pays off in the long run. Because what you've done is, you've brought an entire, not just a school population, but a community together. And they were very excited, adults and students. So I think going forward, I'd really like to see it done correctly. Right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Eight point three, response motion by Mr. Lay, October 16th, 2024, regarding PA systems. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, Superintendent, so this spreadsheet, I'm glad to see this thick report. However, I'm curious, School Dude Work Order, is that software being used recently? Or we have that for a long time? Because I've seen every work in here, complete work, none of them are pending. And some of them say Coburn Hall, so I think that's probably...
If I may, Mr. Lay, I think you're referring to item 8.4. I'm happy to talk about that.
The PA system, Mr. Lay.
Sorry?
The PA system?
The PA system. I'm sorry. The PA system is not me.
No, it is you.
It is you.
I know it's listed on the agenda, Mr. Lay, but actually it's...
Oh. Mr. Conway, any comments on PA systems?
Oh.
Just quickly, the PA systems, I think that, I thank you for the report on that. I think it's extremely important. We talked about this. I think also going forward, there needs to be updates on it too. Because we want to make sure that we're constantly checking that PA system. If there's any, any problems with it, let's, let's wait, let's fix it and not wait the, that six months that we had at, at one of our schools. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point four, Mr. Lay, back to you. A responsible motion by Mr. Lay on February 7th, 2024, regarding maintenance report. Mr. Lay?
Thank you. So that School Dude Work Order, is that something that we had it for a while ago? Or is something new?
School Dude is not new. I'm guessing in the region of a couple of years, we've had it, maybe more, more than that, for several years.
Well, that's your, I'm, I'm, and how, how is it going so far? Because the reason I put that motion in, because staff was saying that we had no, they don't know any other way to report besides telling the principal. So, so do all the staff know how to submit this and go on with their software and submit?
No, nor should they, Mr. Lay. Thank you for the question. So it's appropriate that staff be able to report any and all repairs that are needed. And they can. And they oftentimes do it through the principal. The person who oversees School Dude and repair orders and so on is the senior custodian. And so in every school, we have a senior custodian, and they manage what goes into School Dude and tracking the repairs.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we could, if I could get my colleagues' permission to have a subcommittee meeting on facilities and transportation and provide this report to that committee, as well as the one that's coming up later tonight in response to a motion about transportation. I think both these issues could, we could take a deeper dive, and I don't want to do it here. I think their appropriate venue is to look at it in subcommittee and then come back and report. And so again, to my earlier question about if we could include for that meeting, how those decisions are being made about priorities, maybe ask Mr. Sincere to provide a couple of paragraphs if he doesn't want to come to the meeting. And then my last point on that would be, we already have the policy meeting coming up January 8th. Maybe we could pull to piggyback facilities and transportation at that meeting? Or not. I could come out another night. I just think if we could do two meetings in one night, it's efficient.
There's a motion by Ms. Doherty to have eight, four, and eight, eight to a facilities transportation subcommittee, seconded by Mr. Rossi, also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Eight point five, a motion by Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway, Ms. Doherty, on November 20th, 2024, regarding meaning the Jean Dax School for former superintendent George Sepasaris. We're like it.
Are we getting a response to it?
Basically, they're, they're working on the graphic design.
It was our way of acknowledging that you have voted for this to occur and that we're taking action to make sure it's formalized. It was just our way to communicate that we've got it.
Right. And if I could, if I could just ask, and I'm not sure how you, my, my co-sponsors on the motion feel, I'd like some kind of plan to keep the Janice Adie, some, something about the, the building or the program or the center, that we don't lose that, that name. Because I think she, you know, 30, over 30 years committed to our special education students, and that's one of our more recent named...
I'm very conscious of following the will of the body. And so you may want to provide me some guidance on that. It's not possible to name the school by, for two people.
Right.
And so I'm not quite sure what you mean. But if there are ideas and the body, you know, says we'd like this wing to be named such and so, and this wing such and so, and so, absolutely.
Well, maybe a wing or a center or a part of the school. I'm open to ideas, once you have a better sense of, of the school. I mean, I don't know, do...
Yeah, I'd support that. I mean, I think that's the spirit that we wanted to maintain. So if there was a specific area that one program will be in, that, you know, was kind of where the current AD population is moving to, that makes sense. And then the school as a whole would, would be named after Mr. Sepasaris.
Understood. We'll work on that.
So there's two, there's both of our buildings in the, at the school, correct?
Yes. And so for what it's worth, it's not entirely decided exactly how the space will be used. But regardless, we know now that it'll be named the George Sepasaris School. But we, we need, I'm hearing that you say, we need also to honor Janice Adie, particularly with that program that was named for her. So we'll work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point six, response to motion by Mr. Bahu and Mr. Rossi, November 6th, 2024, regarding policies and procedures for injured staff members. Mr. Bahu?
Sure. Thank you for this report. It looks like, you know, there is a protocol for our special education department to fill out a form in case they are injured, or in case there's a issue with a student and such like that. I think I'm looking for maybe a little bit more in the sense that on motion 811, it seems like we're losing some SLPs, that Ms. Doherty, her motion coming up on 811, that we're losing some SLPs, we're losing some occupation educational people. My question is, are we losing some special education people based on injuries? And if, you know, and if we are, how are they feeling supported? Other than having to fill out a form and basically go out on injury? It clearly says in 811 that, you know, we're having a hard time finding special education teachers, we're having a difficult time finding speech-language pathologists, and so on and so forth. So as much as, you know, they can fill out a form and claim their injury, and hopefully they're okay, because, you know, we really worry about our teachers, how are they feeling supported? Because realistically, sometimes the students react in a way that is violent, that could be pretty difficult for a teacher to come back for a period of time. Therefore, it makes it much more works involved for those special education teachers to pick up the, on the teachers that are out and that we can't hire. So, you know, maybe some more than the form that is, you know, standard protocol. Because, you know, special education students are about 4,000 of our student, of our 14,000 student body here. So I think it really should be identified in a much more encompassing way.
Mr. Rossi?
In addition, Mrs. Legrand, Mayor, honestly, like, our, our staff needs to know they're going to be rescued somehow, whether it's a May Day call or something. Our staff does not feel comforted at this point. And that is what I'm getting across the board. And that is something that our staff, to be able to secure our special education positions, need to feel on the front lines. Our, our teachers who are on, every day, like, frontward-facing staff, we, they need to know that they're going to be supported with a one-two call on their walkie. Or if they don't have a walkie, why don't they have a walkie? Our kids, we love them. But at the same time, they can be very violent. And we want to make sure that we retain our staff and our supportive staff at the same time. I can't tell you how many times I've seen staff go out for shoulder surgery, or this, or that. And it's just, like, what can we do to prevent this? Or what can we do to de-escalate the situation before it gets to that point? And our staff needs a code red or a code blue, or I need you right away.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi and Mr. Bahu. Maybe if I can make a couple of remarks, I agree with everything that's been said, and it's, and it's helpful. One detail, I guess, is that the, the report asks specifically about injury reporting. And just as a matter of fact, all injuries have to be reported in the same way. And so there's not a separate or distinct, you know, reporting for special ed staff versus regular staff and so on. It's all reported the same way. But, but I think beyond that, there's some issues that you're referring to that demand attention. And so the, the concerns, I think, are valid. One thing that I'd like to distinguish, though, we, these kinds of concerns have existed where difficult, you know, to manage programs have existed. At, in a school that I was principal of for many years, we had several programs. We had five, five in that school that had difficult to manage students with disabilities. And there's a lot we do for them. And there was never, you know, there were people that got scratches, but there was never a serious injury. We provide, number one, and it may not be what people are looking for right off, but we provide training. And those trainings are in specific strategies around de-escalating student issues. And they're very effective when used well. The other suggestions, things like Ms. Del Rossi mentioned, are entirely practical. Shouldn't the staff member have a way to contact the administration in the school right away and receive immediate support? Absolutely. Right? And, but the other feature, when I listen to the concerns, is that we believe that those systems are in place. And we monitor and go, so what we need, Ms. Del Rossi, is for you to tell us and give us examples of where it's not in place so we can fix that. Right? So what's happening sometimes is that committee members are becoming aware of situations, in all likelihood, very true and very genuine. But if we're not made informed of that, we can't actually deal with it. And then we hear it in this forum and are able to report back to you in a big, big written report. But it might not be getting at the actual issue, right? So you must tell us about those issues, and we will deal with those issues. Thank you.
Eight point seven, motion, response by Ms. Doherty on September 18th, 2024, regarding exit interview data. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you for this report. I just, in reading over my motion, I was asking that we get this quarterly, and I'm wondering if that is too often. I think it was a reaction to the fact that there were so many years we didn't hear anything. So I'm open for your recommendation if you'd want to do it instead of quarterly, biannually, twice a year. I just, I don't want to go years and years and years. And my other piece on this, it's a lot of good responses. And I realize that maybe it's difficult for people who are disgruntled or didn't have a happy experience, and that's why they're leaving, to put the effort in to tell us about that. Maybe they just want to go. And, but of course, my hope is that we would get some of those more balanced responses. Because I know we have seen in this timeframe that this report covers 2021 school year through 2024, the current school year. I know we've had a lot of people leaving, people with many years of experience. We've had certain schools that had a large amount of turnover. I don't see this report reflecting that, and that's not, I don't know that we can actually blame. If, as long as we're offering everybody the opportunity, please tell us why you're leaving. We want to know. But I, I do think that I don't need quarterly. So I'm open to your suggestion, Mr. Skinner. But I would, I'd like to see more balanced comments. They're all like, oh, it's so wonderful. And I, you know, I know we do feel that way, but they're not everybody does.
Both of your, I'd love to give you my real thoughts around how frequently it's reported. But, but on a, on a practical level, I'd like to suggest it be reported annually. If you think about it, the vast majority of hiring and exits occur at the end of the school year. And so the vast majority of exit interviews occur at that time. Perhaps if we reported to you every September, or every, maybe July, or August, or something in that region, so after people have done those. I think that would be, but annually, I think, makes sense. If you ask for an update in six months, over in December, but yeah, we won't have much to report to you. The second comment, if I may, I specifically vetted Dr. Hall's work on this report. And I asked to see the exit interviews. And so he provided them to me in two huge folders, two huge folders. And so one evening, I just, I enjoyed... And so one evening, I just, I enjoyed going through them, and some people say very little and some people go on at great length. The vast majority of people's, I don't, I have, I'm not looking at what was in that report now. The vast majority of people made comments like, "It was a pleasure to work in Lowell. I loved my career at the XYZ school" and so forth. The vast majority were positive. It was difficult to find people who said something negative. That might be because the vast majority of people are really, uh, uh, grateful and, and happy, but it might be because some people who are disgruntled don't do an exit interview, right? And so again, as with the comment, uh, that I made earlier, where you know of specific examples, please tell us and we'll run those down. And we can report back, uh, with, with, with the exit interviews and additional information if we have it.
And I appreciate that, and I'm fine with, uh, an annual report. Um, and I would just like to say, I'm not looking for disgruntled employees just to get them. I'm looking to learn because the, the more collaborative culture that we can foster, the more we're going to keep those talented staff. So that's really the, the intention is to be able to get some constructive feedback and, and learn from it and do better. But I, I, I'm telling you, I learned, I looked at it myself and I'm like, yeah, quarterly isn't too much. Once a year would work. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I, I absolutely agree. I think an annual report on this data is perfectly appropriate. What I would say is that it would be great to kind of build it into an over kind of year-end HR report because I think what would be, I mean, the reality is, is that people who are leaving, who are upset, what I, they're not going to do an exit interview. I mean, they're just making their way out the door and that's, you know, that's, that's what they're focused on. But I think we could find some instructive information if we were able to kind of, I mean, again, a lot of, I think, what drove this was when we were seeing schools, school communities that were having mass exodus that were, I, that's a little dramatic, but sorry, you'll forgive me that. Um, but, you know, when you have a school community, when you had twenty-five percent of the staff all looking to move to even just to other schools, not even necessarily just leaving the district, but moving to other schools, that tells you something. That, that's data that we can actually use that I think can be helpful. So if we could build into this kind of annual report, um, some information on where we're seeing, you know, just a, a high turnover rate. In the past, we've been able to kind of have calculated for us the turnover rate at each school. Um, I don't need to see every school, but I would like to see the ones where there is a high turnover rate because I think that that does tell you something. I think teachers vote with their feet just like everybody else. Um, and that could be, that could be instructive and helpful for us, um, when we're kind of, you know, looking at, at school climate and school communities. Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you. Ms. Lay and Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to add that, um, perhaps, uh, those people do not want to give negative feedback in a, afraid of retaliation or, or whatever. So is there any way that we can do this interview discreetly or?
It's anonymous.
Oh, is it anonymous already?
People who are leaving, Mr. Lay, have little incentive or little worry about retaliation because they're leaving anyway. It's a great time to seek critical feedback, um, and, and it's done in a, in a confidential setting.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
My only question is if we need a new motion, are you, are you, do we need to have a new motion? Are you clear what we're, we're saying we'll get it annually as part of a larger report? Do you need a motion on that? Does anybody know?
I, I don't need a motion.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Thank you.
Uh, eight point nine, response to motion by Ms. Del Rossi, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding accountability for central office. Ms. Del Rossi?
Thank you for the response. Um, I find that it was very, um, inclusive and that it was also encompassing of all various positions, and I just hope that that is what the model is going forward. So thank you.
Eight ten, response to motion by Ms. Del Rossi, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding supporting grants. Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes, and it looks like you guys are applying for a lot of those grants. The Promise Neighborhood has to do with the nonprofits in the area, so it would be good if we could find some nonprofits that want to align with us. So I hope that happens, um, especially for the food truck. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would just say, having, uh, led a Promise Neighborhood grant proposal team, uh, this was probably about four or five years ago, maybe longer. Uh, it, you know, Promise Neighborhood is a really complicated, um, federal grant. Um, I'm not aware of any nonprofit right now in the city that would kind of be in a position to, to take it on. Um, but it, I mean, there are a lot of other grant opportunities that I think would be better aligned, you know, for, uh, for what we're trying to accomplish here in the Lowell Public Schools. And I do know that the, the grants team within, between fiscal and, and, uh, some of the other programming areas are actively looking at, at a lot of different ones. Promise, I think, gets a lot of press, but it, it really, it's not necessarily the answer, I think, in, in Lowell, so at least not right now. Thanks.
Eight eleven, uh, motion response by Ms. Doherty from June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding special education improvement plan. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you very much for this plan. I know we've had a lot of changes in administration, specifically special education. Um, I, I think this is a report I'd like to delve into more deeply, and I'm hoping that we can send it to the Special Education Subcommittee. Um, I believe Ms. Del Rossi is chair of that. Um, and if we could include, I'm very excited to see this idea of getting a committee together to look at this very important work, and if we could get more information on how you see the makeup of that committee and it not, I'm not interested in individual names so much as roles. Who's going to be on that team that's looking to, what are the areas we need to really address, uh, which the report does touch on? The staffing concerns, the instructional, quality of instruction, professional development. Um, and I would hope we'd be able to, um, incorporate some of these changes soon, you know, because I think we are, so.
So we got a motion by, uh, Ms. Doherty to send it to the Special Education Subcommittee, seconded by Mr. Rossi.
Yes, with a motion to ask for the social, like, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education to be able to work with me to put together a meeting so that we can discuss this.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rossi. Do you, just for clarity, do you mean the Director of Special Education or, um, uh, Dr. Legrand?
I'll take either of them.
Thank you. But in terms of planning the meeting, yeah, thank you.
All the affairs, aye. Opposed, motion passes. Eight twelve, report on motions. Excellent. The motion to a, that's fine, good.
We take a look at, uh, excuse me, the first one there. Uh, that was the, uh, Park Avenue East. I haven't, I, I'm by there all the time. I have not seen any changes at all on that. I know it says it's ongoing, but, uh, do we have any progress on that? Do we know?
Mr. Conway, do you mind to point me to it?
It's the very first, it's the first one when.
Oh, I see. So yes, uh, if I may, Mr. Conway, while I'm, while I'm answering your question, I want to, uh, remind the committee that, um, when your motions have been responded to and when you've indicated that you're satisfied with the response, we mark them as complete. We don't remove them until we present this report to you that we're reporting tonight. And if it says complete on it, we consider, that, that's what we're sharing with you, that we consider that one to be complete. The motion Mr. Conway refers to the very first one, uh, says ongoing, and in the notes, it indicates that we did respond to Mr. Conway's motion, um, it back in August, and then during the, uh, September fourth meeting, Mr. Conway requested that the motion remain ongoing until expected safety measures implemented, which is quite sensible. You got a response to the motion, but has the work occurred yet?
I, I haven't, I haven't seen anything unless I missed it.
That's why it's ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I know you know this, Mr. Conway, it's not within our purview to actually.
I understand.
But, but we're keeping that open, um, and, and, and we'll do so until it's completed.
Right. And the one, uh, on the, uh, the Lowell High School, um, let's see, the mock election, obviously, we, sadly, we can say that's completed, all right? Um, and then the, the one on the athletic program, uh, let's see, that's, uh, motion number thirty-seven. Uh, it says completed. Uh, that's, that athletic program, we're dealing with the, the middle schools in particular too, and we're trying to, I think, make some changes there and to add to it because that certainly is our feeder system. And I've often said it's, you know, whether it's athletics or other activities, is the greatest dropout prevention program you can have. So I, I think I would like to see that, uh, as ongoing because that's something we're going to be, we're going to be visiting, and especially if something comes up in one of the middle schools, like, I know there's a lot of events that come up, and I mentioned it to someone, uh, the other day. Uh, Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
When there's, um, when there's different events, you know, athletic events they were telling me about, there was a wrestling, uh, event at, at, I think it was the Sullivan and so forth. It'd be nice if we would be notified so that, I think the kids like to see, um, the school committee there, parents like to see, teachers like, and, and what usually happens is, we all know, after we go and visit, what do we do? We come here and talk about what wonderful things we saw. So it's a win-win. Uh, you know, I, I just think, you know, I think it might be a good idea on that.
I agree, Mr. Conway. But, and. Mr. Conway, on the athletics, can I be clear that, that, uh, we have recorded previously your decision that that be moved to a subcommittee? Do you want to change that? Do you want it still to be dealt with in subcommittee?
Well, I think that, uh, I think we're going to, is it, we, are you going to meet with the, uh, Athletic Director and then discuss it and see if, if that's what we're going to do, was have a, why don't we do that?
Dr. Foxroy.
All right?
Yeah.
And, uh, let's see, the pest control, I do get cut telephone calls all the time on the little critters. So when it says completed, do we, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a little, um, direction here. Do we keep that as, as, uh, ongoing with the pest control or do we just?
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Um, so I want to be sure you're not giving up your, 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 your control here. You are welcome to suggest how you want it to be treated, even if it's marked completed. The point is that you get to decide if it's completed or not. But, but may I suggest that we've, in recent times, we've a habit of having quite a few that we want, uh, you know, to be kept ongoing, and there's a list of them that are periodic reports. That grows, and I'm not sure that that's a practical idea. What I'd rather suggest, and this is my suggestion, would be, please enter a motion each and every time you want to report, a report about pest control, and we will report back to you. I don't need.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, any motion to accept the reports of the, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I wanted to just say, I've got a couple you can remove, and a few of mine, like, um, we already talked about M zero seven seven, that that's going to go to special education. M zero five nine was about the health curriculum. I, I know we're going to be scheduling a curriculum subcommittee.
Ms. Doherty, excuse me, what, what was the first one you called?
M zero seven seven.
And what page is that on?
Um, oh, I should, I didn't realize they're not chronological. I'm sorry.
I have it anyway. I have it anyway. And, and on that one, you're saying you'd like that removed?
It's on page, page five. That's the one we just voted to go to the Special Education Subcommittee that we're going to schedule in the new year.
Understood.
And then, um, the one I had on the health curriculum, and I just wrote down the number, I have to look where I highlighted it. So we did a pilot, uh, on health curriculum.
Yes.
And it turned out to not be a great pilot. So we, I'm hoping we can continue with it, getting an update on that, um, at the curriculum subcommittee meeting. So that's M zero five nine, and it looks like.
So you have notes in there, Ms. Doherty, and it was completed. But again, please call for any additional information you want, either in subcommittee or elsewise.
Yeah, I, see, I don't see it completed. I don't, I mean, it says completed, but I don't think it was completed because we came up with a way to include students and what they thought about health curriculum, but the pilot, the curriculum was subsequently decided to not be good curriculum. So I wanted to come back to us with what's the new plan for the health curriculum because we invested in making sure every middle school has it.
Understood. Would you like us to do that, uh, by, by making this ongoing or, or is that intended to be dealt with in a subcommittee? Either way.
Well, we're, we are going to be scheduling a curriculum subcommittee, so if we don't have a full-out plan, at least to be able to talk to us, what are we doing for the health curriculum?
In the subcommittee?
Yes.
Understood. Thank you.
So that, and I, these pages are numbered, so I think that's.
Zero five nine, right?
Yeah, zero five nine.
Thank you.
Um, and I told you you could remove zero nine zero, and you can remove zero eight nine. And you know what? I can send you the removal ones. Okay, so we, Ms. Martin and I had a motion January fourth, twenty twenty-three, that was M zero zero two, to get a request from the city law office, providing the committee with a report that cites when the mayor, the superintendent, anyone has the authority to remove a member's motion from the school committee agenda. I'm wondering if we could just, um, prod the, the law department to give us, uh, a report on that because they, at that time, we had a motion, a joint motion that was removed before we got to discuss it with the committee. I just want to make sure that going forward, this clarification around that. And then the last one you can remove for me, at least on my notes here, is M zero six nine. There's, there might be other ones, but for now, that's enough.
Water filtration, remove. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, eight point one through eight point twelve, is a report to progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Del Rossi. All the, a roll call, one clerk?
No.
No? All the affairs, aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Nine, new business, nine point one, approval to accept and expend allocated FY twenty-five awards. The motion to approve, accept and expend by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Nine point two, approval to accept Vevus Pocket Transportation Kits, the motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Nine point three, request approval of Bureau Project of the Fella Bill School, Mass Cultural, the motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Nine point four, budget modification request, the motion to approve by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Nine point five, first reading of the Lowell Public Schools policies drafted by MASC Section G. The motion to waive the first reading, uh, and bring the, uh, Section G forward for the[1725.86] The motion to waive the first reading and bring the Section G forward for the next meeting for approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, we, there are some clarifications I think are worthwhile making, Ms. Doherty first, if you wish. May I call on our chief equity officer, Ms. Phillips?
What one had to do with the buses?
Sorry?
Which one had to do with the buses? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So we had a robust review of the personal policies. And there are five in particular that we need to highlight. The first is GBGD, domestic violence leave. That is a brand new policy for both public schools. And if you look at page 45, there's a note from our MASC, our director assigned to us. And they said that the superintendent, the school committee in consultation with the superintendent, they choose to make this type of leave paid or unpaid. And if you look at the code below, it says the employer shall have the sole discretion to determine whether this leave shall be paid or unpaid. An employee seeking such leave shall exhaust all annual or vacation leave, personal leave and sick leave available to the employee prior to requesting or taking domestic violence leave unless the employer waives the requirement. So the school committee needs to make a decision on whether, on whether this will be paid or unpaid leave.
Ms. Doherty?
Did we get advice from the council? I mean, the legal counsel?
So the policies were sent to legal counsel and we have not received a response yet. So at our January 8th meeting, we could discuss this.
Okay.
We'll vote on all these things at the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Just a quick question as I just go into the law office for review. Is this aligned with what the city is doing?
There hasn't been a response on that yet. There is a parameter within state law that allows this as well, so it doesn't come up as anything.
Because I mean, if this is saying that the statute doesn't require employers with less than 50 employees to provide this, we, on both sides of the House, are obviously larger than that. So does that, I'm reading that to mean that we are required.
We've already provided.
Okay. Okay. But we don't know where the city language is. Okay. So that would be very helpful in terms of getting that before we hope to vote in January. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else?
Okay, the, the next, the next three policies, GCBA, professional staff salary schedules, GCB, professional staff contracts and compensation plans, and GCIA, philosophy of staff development. We are, the subcommittee was recommending adoption based on MASC recommendation. There is some language around unaffiliated staff that is going to be impacted in those policies. And when I last spoke with our MASC director, she, she recommended that we could develop a specific policy for unaffiliated staff that would incorporate any language that's being deleted from these three policies. And we could review that at the January 8th meeting as well.
Awesome.
And then the last policy, GDD, support staff vacations and holidays. This one is also under review. It specifies leave for 12-month employees. And this is a recommendation by MASC, but we need to make sure that it's aligned with our, with our school districts practices currently.
Can you repeat which one that is again?
Mm-hmm. That is GDD, support staff vacations and holidays. That's page 99. And so if you look there, under vacations, it says all 12-month employees will be eligible for paid vacations in accordance with the following, and we need to verify that that is, in fact, how we are aligning vacations. It's showing one to five years, five to 10 years, after 10 years. So that's an, that's a policy we'd like to revisit on January 8th.
Okay.
Thank you. So you have motion for approval by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call?
You already had first.
Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Nine point six, home education. The motion to approve home education. Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Seven yays.
Motion for adjournment, Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Good evening.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty and Mr. Lay?
Yes.
You all right?
I was lost without my glasses.
Let's see the time again. Danny, not bad.
Not bad.
Not bad. I mean, you know, I can't give you the A.
What? 13 reports.
Went for the road? Huh? You are?
[inaudible]
Can you read them?